Call the meeting to order. The meeting has been noticed at Evans Printing Media Group, WCOW Radio, Magnum Radio, La Crosse Tribune, Sparta City Hall, and the Sparta Free Library. Are there any changes to the agenda?
Yes, we would like to allow the high school students to go first if we could and let them get home to their evening.
All right.
And if it's appropriate at this time, I'd like to pull item K from the consent agenda.
And Mr. Lyden, I'd like to pull section H out of the same consent agenda, please.
Okay. Do I have a motion to adopt the agenda as amended?
I would make that a motion.
I'll second that motion.
We have a motion for Mr. Hendricks, a second for Ms. Presswood to adopt the amended agenda. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed? Motion carries 7-0. First item up is public input. Just a reminder, speakers have two minutes for their time to speak.
Mr. Lyden?
Oh, yep, never mind.
We changed the agenda to let the kids go.
Yep, yep. Sparta High School Student Report, Alex Kress and Peyton Jones.
Hi, my name is Peyton Jones. I'm the senior class president.
Hi, I'm Alex Kress. I'm the senior class vice president.
So, since last month when we presented, our school has had a busy few months with lots of fundraisers, dress-up weeks, and after-school activities. This week, we have our holladazzle week with our school therapy dog Beans coming in, and we're raising money for the local Rotary Light. We also have a holiday door decorating which highlights our Spartan way during the grad groups, and we had Santa and his elves make an appearance for the winning doors.
Winter sports are underway right now, so boys' and girls' basketball, wrestling, gymnastics, and dance. Girls' basketball had an exciting win over on Alaska for the first time since January 14th, 2011, so it was a pretty big accomplishment. And boys' hockey also beat... This past week, so a couple of good wins. Girls' basketball raised $1,100 to be donated to Saks last week. The boys' basketball team were preparing for a West Salem Holiday Tournament next week, and gymnastics has taken second in both of their competitions, one in the conference meet and the other in invitational.
Our extracurriculars have also been really busy. Show choir has been preparing for their competition season, which begins in January. They also have a home performance at the high school on Thursday, January 6th at 7:00 PM, and they would love to have people come and support them. The dance team has been working hard to get ready for regionals in January. So far, they've competed in two competitions, and they have two more left to go. They've been working on ways to grow their team and fundraise for their team. DECA had a really successful DECA week in November. They raised over $1,000 for MDA. They helped the Lions Club sell food at Kris Krindl Mart, and 19 of their members went to the Mall of America on December 18th. And then, they are preparing for their first round of competition in January at EW Stout. FBLA collected many useful items for adults and kids during the Afghanistan Friends Drive during Homecoming Week. Members completed the advertising for the winter sports programs that are distributed at all the home winter sport events. And members are preparing to compete at the regional leadership competition in February at La Crosse. And then, FFA had a successful fruit sale, and 16 of their members attended the Fall Leadership Workshop, and they were the largest group from all the area chapters.
Finals are coming up, so I can't say any of us are really looking forward to that, but winter break is a nice kind of counterbalance. So, yeah, everyone's just preparing in that holiday mood and trying to do the best they can, I guess, so it's just the wrap-up.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any questions from board members? Thanks, guys. Appreciate it for stopping by.
Thank you.
All right, now we will get to public input. Just a reminder to speakers, there's two minutes. When there's 30 seconds left, I'll kind of raise my hand and give you a wave down, just to let you know you're coming up on your time limit. Our first speaker is Kristen Gust and her little guy.
Thank you, guys, for letting me come and speak tonight. I will not take my whole two minutes tonight, but I'm just here to speak in behalf of the new plaza and memorial field. I'd like to ask for you to support that and the Booster Club's initiative for fundraising. I think the school district had set aside this money. Maybe there wasn't enough money to do this plaza, but I think it's really important that if there's a private group of citizens that's willing to do that fundraising and do the legwork for that, to allow them to do that. And I think with everything that I do with this... Everything I do with other organizations, I think we're always looking forward. It's not what we need today, but it's what do we need in five and 10 years? What do we need when Theo Geier is the star quarterback of the Sparta football team? You know, so old mom can sit there and watch. But I think if you add that plaza, it adds capacity, it adds attendance, it adds an illusion of first-class field. And I just think it's a great idea, and I would ask for your support with that tonight. So, thank you very much.
Thank you. Next individual, Brad True.
Just wanted to, you know, speak with you guys just a little bit regarding the referendum that I believe you're voting on tonight. I've heard a lot of different numbers. I haven't been to a board meeting for a little while, but at first, I heard that we were looking for $2.8 million. Then, I don't know what the reasons were. If we thought it was too big of an ask, maybe we should go for 1.9. It might sound a little better. Guess we're landing on 2.1. I believe we're increasing that from $750,000, and this is a two-year referendum, as I understand it, so it's $4.2 million. You know, I'm all about Sparta. This is where I grew up. I want to support everything. I love what we're doing with the football field. I hope that we invest in all that. But I have a really hard time trying to get my head around how you guys are asking for more money when I've spoken to the majority of you guys, and I know a lot of other people have, some very simple requests. Revisiting the masking policy, I know you guys had a special meeting on it, but we didn't even get everybody to vote. We made this decision on the mask back in September, and it was very obvious what the majority wanted. For you board members that don't know what the 2021 Wisconsin Youth Risk Behavior Survey is, if you guys don't know what this is, if you haven't read all 89 questions, I would encourage you to do so. I'm going to read question number 59 to you, and I've spoke to most of you about this as well a while back. We took two days during English class to take this survey, and we did it so we could get $750,000 of grant money. I'm getting a hand, so I may not have time to read it. Read question number 59. It's very inappropriate. Here's the deal. I would have supported a $3 million referendum if we wouldn't have asked these kind of questions to our kids aged 12 through 18. I won't support this. Our open enrollment is up, is going out of control. We're losing students. We are losing over $1 million in addition to the previous five years of administration to where we are right now. And we're asking for more money. Our taxes will go up. I'm not willing to vote on something until I see a plan for how we're going to continue to improve in something that's sustainable. There was test scores that were revealed. It does not look good. So, you guys need to show voters how you're going to make a difference and make things start to change. And we better not be cutting teachers' salaries. That better not be, or the ability to be competitive. I didn't know all these guys were going to be sitting here. I just got to say this because I have kids in high school. They work their butt off to make it awesome, and they're the recipient of your decisions. So, I hope that you guys can start to get some way-forward thinking that gets the confidence of the voters, because right now, I mean, I know for myself and a lot of others, it's not there. Thank you.
Thank you. Next individual, Gene Tru.
Father, son, I didn't know Brad was here, so I guess it's probably part of our love for our community. I'm Gene Tru. I reside in the town of Sparta. I want to speak to the members of the school board. I'm a taxpayer, and I'm a stakeholder. I'm here to speak about the $2.1 million referendum, or should I say $4.2 million referendum? Because that's really, when we check the box, that's what we're committing to. Equalized budget, mill rate, perhaps these are terms that most taxpayers don't understand or how they filter down through to land on our tax bill. But what they do understand is their obligation on their tax bill. What brought me here tonight was the article in the newspaper, and even though it gives us a snapshot of what's going on here, it really doesn't tell the whole story. The article quotes that the mill rate will have no impact on the mill rate. That's a true statement, because this is not part of the operating budget. This is above the levy cap, it's debt service. A revale that most communities have done through our district increased our equalized by about 30%. When that happens, coupled with new construction, it gives more capacity to tax, to raise the mill rate, or to lower the mill rate, but not lower at all. You can still raise your budget. You get more funds as a result of it. What's not reported in this article is that if we don't pass the referendum, our taxes will go down. On your tax bill, there's a transparency. On the bottom, there's three line items. Those are all debt service. One of those line items is going to triple, because the $750,000, which I believe has been around for over 10 years, became the new norm. Is the 2.1 going to become the new norm? I understand you're in a tough spot, but when I see the numbers that over 200 students have enrolled out, there's a million dollars of it right there. I think there's a different agenda item you ought to be really focusing on, but going back to the taxpayer for more money. When 52% of my tax bill is debt service in a township of Sparta, I'm sure every tax bill is different because of how it's equated. 52% of my tax bills is debt service. And a side note, half of my tax bill is a school district. I was told as a voter that building a new school wasn't going to impact our taxes. I'm told this isn't going to impact our taxes. That's not true. The line items on the bottom, I am paying on my home $2,070 in just debt service annually. I think the taxpayers have had enough. If you want to break it down so you really understand it, it's about $500 per $100,000 of assessment. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, next item is going to be the consent agenda without items H and items K, which we will visit after approving the rest of the consent items. If there are no questions from board members, I'll take a motion.
There's no further discussion. I'll make a motion to approve the consent agenda without with H and K.
I will second.
We have a motion from Mr. Burns Gilbert, a second, is that you?
Yeah.
Second for Mr. Scholz to approve the consent agenda minus items H and K. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed? Motion carries 7-0. All right, we will take item H now. The reason, I'm going to guess, is this was polled was Mr. Scholz has to abstain on this item.
Yeah, I have a daughter graduating, so I'm very excited about that.
So, if I could get a motion on item H.
I'll move item H.
We have a motion from Mr. Hendricks, a second.
Second.
From Ms. Presswood to approve item H. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed? Motion carries 6-0, one abstention. Item K, discussion and possible action to approve Mr. Burns Gilbert use his judgment to vote in his role as WS... Mr. Hendricks just wanted to clarify his motion.
Right, yeah, I believe the original, the motion that passed was to direct Mr. Burns Gilbert to vote in favor of the resolutions that were presented and to use his judgment in the case of any amendments to those resolutions.
Is that a motion, Mr. Hendricks?
Yes.
I'll second that.
We have a motion from Mr. Hendricks and a second from Mr. Lukasik to approve the amended item K. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed? Motion carries 7-0. Next item up, business. Discussion only regarding the Booster Club involvement in funding the Memorial Field Plaza. Mr. Lyden.
We actually are kind of a team in this one, so... Because we've got everybody here, from Rettler, Market &amp; Johnson, our coaches, athletic directors, Mr. Fromm, and folks from the community supporting this project. So, before asking you to vote tonight on the pre-bid items, I do want to get the board and the public up to speed on kind of where the discussions are regarding the plaza, which was never part of the original RFP. That will not change what you're asked for tonight. There's no decisions being made tonight, but we felt it was important that you have all of the information that everyone else has before making the final decision on the pre-bid items. So, one of the things that we have discussed with Market &amp; Johnson and Rettler is the chances that there would not be a finished product at the end of this, and I am assured that regardless of the design that the board ultimately approves, the project will be a quality finished project, and it will be within the budget that's established. So, this is an information-only item, so you have it all. So, next slide, please. So, just to summarize where we ended last time, the base plan includes the field, the grandstands, the bleachers, the press box. It's the lights and the walking track. That's the complete base plan for $3,001,000 and some odd dollars. The preferred plan is the base plan plus the plaza, plus the enclosed grandstand storage and perimeter fencing, which takes us up to $3,381. And next slide, please. Just a quick reminder, the differences you'll see are really on the north and the northwest end, where that is the base project, still very nice, but doesn't have the levels and the plaza in that. Next slide. So, that's the $3.381 million all-in preferred, and we're going to talk more about specifically that plaza piece, which is the concrete that comes all the way down the west end for standing viewing, as well as the stairs and ramp on the east side of the Gridiron Club. Next slide. And these are just some close-ups, so you can see there are significantly in the base plan less asphalt work and less concrete work, and then we have a ramp for the west-side ADA accessibility. Next slide. And in the plaza plan, what's so cool about this is that it's all level with the west side of the grandstands, so that our ADA access is straight into the grandstands. So, at this time, next slide, please. I'd like to turn it over to Bob Lyden, who is the chair, is the president of the Gridiron Club, and he's been working closely with us to talk about how we might facilitate that plaza.
Like I said, when we first approached this project, we would be here for you guys, support you guys if it overran, and I think we all knew it would. I mean, we just knew that. So, with that being said, we went back, I went back to the club. We had a meeting this last month, and our club feels comfortable at taking the reins and running lead on a fundraising project for this. Our contribution that we feel comfortable fundraising for was $250,000. That's what we agreed to as a club. We're getting older, not as aggressive as it used to be. Our last loan with the school was $315,000 that we did pay off in six years. I think this year, this project is going to be much easier. We have the full support of the soccer club. They're taking ownership of the field, right along with the football team, which I think is awesome. The Chamber, I have talked to the Chamber, and they are 100% behind us also, which opens up a lot more avenues for us for help in fundraising ideas and companies to approach, and who to approach and how to. It's been a while since we did it, but we're comfortable. We're not too afraid of it at all. We have our upfront money that the club agreed to put down to get started is $50,000. That's what we'll start with, and we'll go from there. There's a few things, and I don't know if we want to go through the slideshow as we go, that we would ask, for us to be able to do this, we do need to approach the sponsorship issue, that we would have to get approval from the board to seek sponsorships for the field. I think that's kind of critical in the amount of dollars we're asking for. And with that being said, obviously, it's not going to be a one-year type loan payback for us to you. We did it last time. Our major donors had a three-year issue when we got our $15,000 donors. They, as a company, would plan for a $5,000 payment out each year, and that's a lot more approachable to some of these larger companies where they can actually plan for their contribution to us every year. So, that was one of the things we need from you, would be that. We would like to see an approval to move forward, so Rettler eventually, not now, but we need the pitchers, and we need, you know, to move on, we just have to... have to have more stuff going on. So, at this point, we're not moving on. I don't want to get ahead of myself. We're excited about it, so...
We are excited about it, and here's where we're at, is that the full all-in plan was the enclosures and storage. It was the full perimeter fencing. With the Gridiron Club, I think setting a very reasonable and attainable goal for fundraising in partnership with the soccer club at $250,000. What that would enable us to construct is a modified preferred plan, which is the base plan plus the plaza. So, the storage under the grandstand and the perimeter fencing would both be bid as alternates. That would enable us to visit those items later on, way later on in the project. If, for example, we don't use all of our contingency, the fencing is roughly $40,000 in estimate, and two 1,000-square-foot bays to enclose the grandstands is another $70,000. So, and those are both things that could be done at a later date without deconstructing something else. The plaza, given all the earthwork, the retaining wall, the raised-up nature of it, if we did the base plan and then went and did the plaza later, it would mean ripping out the ADA ramp and whatever was in there and tearing stuff out that we just paid good money for to put other stuff in. So, anyway, next slide, please. So, circled that, I put the red line around that area just to show what the plaza, that's the area that we're talking about with the $250,000?
Yep. So, you go from the left to the grandstand, it would go all the way around, zero entry coming out. It would alleviate some of the congestion issue with concessions, which you've all seen, the lines wrapped around almost the field, trying to get to concessions. It would help that, and we have a lot of standards, and I personally think this part is more for the community. This is where those guys stand, and there's a pile of them. That's where they BS all night and stand along that side, and I'm sure the coaches appreciate a little bit more distance, and so would the officials by pulling that off farther, and they still have their place to stand, but they're not on top of the field.
Here's what's cool, is that the base plan takes care of the students, and it takes care of seating for the bulk of our fans. The plaza is really about that enhanced experience and taking this from really, really nice to something, to really maximizing the spot, which quite honestly is, I believe, what we hired Rettler to do for us. So, if you go to the next slide, what I wanted to show you is the red ring at the top, that is the base plan, and that's the pared-back asphalt piece. That is likely what we'll be looking at for the fundraising money. So, what we're kind of ending up with is that sweet spot that we always talk about, where we get the most value for our money, and we're not doing a lot of extra frills. So, you know, we'll have enough asphalt to have that, why do I think thoroughfare is what they call it? Yeah, I always forget that word. Thoroughfare and to have our plaza, but not all of the asphalt and things that we had originally talked about. Next slide, please. Okay, you're on. This is the fundraising sponsors part.
And we did kind of, I did kind of touch on that when I said we need approval for the sponsorships. Our thought, just starting, I mean, we got a ways to go to nail all this stuff down, but just looking at how Marshfield and other schools have done it, they've done their sponsorships and then have done signage on endzone fence and that style of stuff. And obviously, it will be classy. It's not going to be anything ratty. It is going to be, you know, and I don't know if it's going to be a multi-year deal that we figure out to do with these companies, or what that all is yet, we don't know. We'd also like to do an extension of the donor wall. We have a donor wall inside the Gridiron Building, but I'm not sold on that as being for what we want to do for this fundraiser. I don't want to get stuff crossed up in there either. So, I would like for the field in the front plaza to have a different donor wall or monument area out front, and I think Market &amp; Johnson and Rettler, you guys had some ideas that what we could do up there, too. So, that would be kind of another way that we can, you know, classily, be classy and show who our sponsors are. You got the next slide?
Yeah, next slide. So, what we got here is a sample donor wall. One of the potential spaces we talked about was on the southeast wall. There's a lot of blank wall space where something like this would fit very nicely. This is Stanley Boyd, and you can see where they have different size plates for different donor levels, and it's that wall of donors is an option, tastefully done and visible from the plaza. Next slide, please. And then, that's also a way to do the scoreboard. This particular one's nice because if you look above the scoreboard, there's a mascot sign in that space above the scoreboard, so there's room for a video screen if there's a desire to add one at a later date, but we wouldn't necessarily need to add it right away, and budget-wise, it probably is not in the cards. But we still, a very nice, and it gives that city field feel to it. Next slide. So, Bob talked about this and...
Yep, touched on this before. I have been in contact with the soccer. I personally have not. Adam has, Coach Shaw has, had made contact with the soccer club, and they are in 100% support of us and with us. So, they said when we're ready, all we got to do is... So they said when we're ready, all we got to do is get ahold of them and they will sit down with us and we can, and start talking turkey, I guess. It's just nice to have instead of just us, the Gridiron Club running this project, that we actually have more help this time. That's for us, exciting. Should be, it's going to be, I think it's, it's going to be fun. I'm a little nervous about it, just like everybody else is, but once we get going and we can talk to the Chamber and we can get stuff going, it'll be, we'll, it'll be fine. I, I project that we will exceed our numbers. I really do.
Next slide. So just to give you a timeline, is that we are looking, we get our pre-bid items tonight. We're looking to come to you with a proposal to approve either the base plan or the modified preferred plan that we talked about tonight with the alternatives. And with that modified preferred plan, we would also present how the funding would look for that with the boosters. So it's going to be a busy January to put all this together. So the RFP and the bid process would go in late January into February. And our goal is as soon as, and I know these guys are already going, oh, March, you know, because these are contractors, they book up pretty quick, right? And we've got a narrow timeline to fit this project into to be ready for fall. So we want to definitely keep it moving forward and get the thing scheduled by March if we can for that May after graduation 2022 start. So just to put it in the context of a larger timeline and plan, there's no action needed tonight, information only. And do you have any questions for either Mr. Lyden or myself?
Any board members have any questions?
I got a question there, Josh.
Go ahead, Mr. Lukasik.
So from a public perception, Bob, and I don't understand the difference between the donor wall and everything like that. But, you know, I've walked by that wall there that has the donor bricks in it. And almost half to three quarters of it is empty. The perception that I, I would get or somebody walking by there is that it's not really heavily supported. On, and I don't know
Okay, that wall that you're looking at is actually the Saks wall. That's the wall we, that, that area we gave to Saks for their fundraising. That's them. We gave it all proceeds. Anything they sell, all that stuff is strictly theirs. That area is for Saks. We actually paid for the sign that we put up on there for Saks. That has nothing to do with our field stuff. Inside is where, if you walk and see the floor and stuff, that's all gridiron stuff inside that building. And to the left, you'll see gold sponsors, silver sponsors, bronze sponsors. That's the gridiron stuff inside. So that wall outside, they've struggled, I know, with that. And I think Saks just has some problems promoting that.
Well, that clarifies why it's, it's not part of the
No.
The club then.
No, we did that hoping that we could, you know, get that moving because they do have their walk down there. So our intentions were to help promote Saks themselves and they had something there when their walk was. Because all that stuff on there is in memory, if you notice, is in memory, a lot of it is in memory of. So that's, yeah, that's a Saks wall there.
Okay, second question for you. You said this donor wall would be inside the building when you walk by? Inside the building or on the side of the building?
The one we're talking about for the, for the new renovation?
Yes.
Will be inside the stadium. Where it's going to be yet, I'm not, I don't know. We threw some ideas out from a monument to actually putting some stuff on the walls, lid on the walls or something like, you know, like that. I don't have an answer for you to say, because this is exactly what we're doing yet, because I don't know what the building looks like and, and what the engineering team wants us to do. I mean, they might not want us on that wall either, so.
Well, the question I got was, is it considered that a more economical method, like putting pavers down with names in instead of, and having the difference in money go towards the project?
Yep, I mean, we're open to all ideas. And in all actuality, Ed, the, the stuff we have inside, the donor wall we have inside on the left-hand side with our, with those sponsors there, that's still come in to the Gridiron Club. And the stuff that's on it, we, if you look, there are pavers on the ground also in that middle. All those monies, anything that the gridiron raises, all goes back, whether it's the field or the, or the field or the football team. At this point, right now, the club's agenda is more towards paying off the monies we may be involved in, in the field itself. Coach Dow does an awesome job fundraising himself right now to, for his extra monies for the team. Previously, we were, the club was responsible for a good portion of that. We would have to donate anywhere from eight to $15,000 a year to the football program. We don't have to do that anymore. So all our fundraising, at this point, will be focused and go towards the field. That's our annual banquet, those monies, all that kind of stuff will go towards the field to make our payment or our, to make sure the obligation is met. With other people being with us, with the soccer team and all the other fundraising monies that are coming in, we'll have more than enough. But typically, our fundraising every year will be enough to make the payment on the loan when, when, when that part comes. I don't want to get ahead of ourselves again like we are.
Thanks for clarifying that for me.
And if I could just add to that, Ed, one of the nice things that, from a steering committee standpoint that we've been looking at, is when we look at the, the sign or the scoreboard itself, there are, there are a number of options for how people choose to donate. We'll have larger signage up there. And then, I, I don't know, could you go back just a few slides to where, right there? This, the thought with, from the steering committee standpoint is that this will overlook the plaza. And so if we're on that southeast wall of where the concession stand is, the ticket booth, it really is, you're standing in the plaza, you're looking at the people that have donated to the plaza. And so I think through the, the donor wall, through the grandstands, and then the potential opportunity for putting signs or, or donors along the fencing as well. I, I, I mean, I think there's a number of opportunities for the Gridiron Club there, so.
Any further questions from board members? Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next item is item B, which is a discussion and possible action to make an exception to board policy article 619 if needed to allow sponsors for Memorial Field. So this was the item previously mentioned where there's our board policy, which kind of puts some restrictions on things. And this is, but it does give us the ability as a board to make exceptions to the rule. And I apologize, we didn't push this through committee level, but things are moving a little quick, so. Yeah.
First of all, the way this reads, I don't know if an exception needs to be made. Any donations that we accept must be board approved. And that would go with the, the conditions it would come with, whether it be a fence sign or whatever. So there isn't anything that would go onto that field in the form of a sponsor that wouldn't come to you first. So if you feel like you would prefer that the policy have something in it to make an exception or there's, I just thought, this is that sponsorship part of the policy, I'd bring it forward. And I do believe that, that we're covered for this, but, you know, ultimately that'll be your decision if you want more clarity.
Got a comment, Josh? I think we should leave the policy the way it is. That gives us an oversight of who's donating the money and who we can thank. Take, take a positive role on it. If we make an exception to this, are we making a precedent for other issues that may come under this policy? I like to have, have the knowledge that someone's donated and when I see them downtown. You know, if I don't go to a game for some whatever reason, you know, that, that plaque, you know, it's not visible to me. But it sure is visible to me as a board member if we're choosing what's going to, what's going to be done with that field. So I, I agree, we, we, I think we should just leave it the way it is now.
I would also be in favor of leaving it as it is, as long as, I would like to hear from Mr. Lyden if he sees anything in the policy that might stand in the way of successfully getting the sponsorships and donors that he would need.
I don't see any issue with it either. I guess it all depends on how much information you guys want thrown at you from me. Do you want to approve everything that we do? Or do you just want me to bring our ideas to you of what it's going to look like at the back end? Is that what you're talking about?
Yeah, well, personally for me, I don't really feel the need for you to bring everything to the board for approval.
Okay.
I'm, I would be comfortable if the athletic directors or Dr. Van Duren gets to have a look at what the plans are. I would certainly be comfortable with that.
Okay, all right. Yeah, then we're good.
And the way I read this, I, we would be looking at logos, right? And some have a phone number, some don't, you know, as you look at different fence signings and stuff. Otherwise, or a website, but it's not, there's no exclusivity rights. It's the logo and that they're a sponsor, so very, very basic.
Any other questions or comments from board members? Does anyone need a motion or are we good to move forward?
Yeah, I don't, I don't see a need to move on anything.
All right. We will move on to item C, discussion and possible action to approve vendors for pre-bid items on Memorial Field. To include field turf, grandstand, bleachers, press box and lighting. So you see the request that was pushed through committee, which was GT grandstands for $830,200 and sprint turf for $428,057.
Mr. Lyden, I got a question.
Go ahead, Mr. Lukasik.
Tonight was first time that I heard that this extra storage was going to cost $70,000 under, under the bleachers. In addition to what the cost of the bleachers are, is that my understanding?
My understanding is that the, that is not part of the base plan. That is an additional thing above and beyond.
The only things we're ordering right now are the things that we will use regardless of which plan we go with. So there is no storage included in this purchase.
So if there's no storage that's included in this purchase, are those grandstands so fitted to allow the storage underneath them?
Yeah.
That's going to cost $70,000 in addition to these grandstands?
In the future, should we choose to do it?
If we choose to do it?
Yep.
Okay.
And with discussions that we've had with Rettler, that can be added at any point in the future, next year, 10 years, 20 years?
And it can be added through a different vendor.
But one of the other big bonuses to that, Ed, was, was that it wasn't going to, there was no teardown at all involved with anything. Yeah, so, so whether, within the base plan, it's not in that. But we can add it at any point down the road without any, with minimal, or no, correct, with, with no issues with the existing field or grandstands.
As, as part of this base price for GT grandstands, it does come with a drainage system underneath the actual stairs and seating area. This is, this is the component that keeps the storage area underneath it dry. All this drainage comes down, is piped into the storm sewer system. So you, you're, in effect, you have a dry area under the bleachers in your base. What you could add in the future is just compartmentalizing some of the areas underneath the, underneath the grandstands. If that helps clarify any of that.
It also includes the concrete pad underneath.
The foundations and the concrete pad are all there, so all you're really doing is building the walls. And the overhead doors and that type of thing that are part of the, part of the storage system.
I've got one more question in reference of the grandstand. You know, from a road, it doesn't look bad. I believe that we need to, to replace them. There must be some good sections that are there. There isn't? Okay, having said that, there's a pile of aluminum there that could be recycled. Is that taken into consideration of the price of putting the, putting this whole package together?
Well, we got a couple of different ways we can go on that. I have had some interest locally in those bleacher lengths. And there's also the option to put the salvage in and request a bid based on the salvage, if that's something our bidders want. So I think we're going to have a few different options to shop so that we can take the best, the best deal for the district.
So that is a consideration?
Absolutely.
Okay. That's all I got, Josh. Thank you.
Any other further questions? If not, I will take a motion.
Mr. Lyden, I'd make, like to make a motion to approve the vendors for pre-bid items on Memorial Field to include the field turf, grandstand, bleachers, press box and lighting.
With the proposed?
Absolutely, yes.
Vendors?
With the proposed vendors, vendors, yes, yep.
So did you say anything about ordering in that?
I would approve. How would you like me to word this?
We need to place an order for those items with the approved, with the vendors that the committee recommended.
Right.
Sound good, Mr. Lyden?
So your motion is to approve the ordering using the GT grandstands and sprint turf as vendors for the Memorial Field project, which includes the field turf, grandstand, bleachers, press box and lighting?
Yes, sir.
I'll second that.
That was his motion.
Heard that.
A second from Mr. Presswood. Roll call.
Yes. Yes.
Yes.
Yes.
Yes.
Yes. Yes.
Motion carries 7-0. Next item, item D, discussion and possible action to approve the purchase of a laser engraver for the high school for $21,775. This came from the Departments of Woods, Metals, there's one more.
Robotics.
Robotics.
And welding.
And welding. It's funding partially from the Perkins Grant, department funds that they've retained over the years and a donation from the robotics team.
I'll make motion to approve.
I'll second.
We have a motion from Mr. Lukasik, a second from Mr. Hendricks to approve the purchase of a laser engraver for the high school. Roll call.
Yes.
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 Motion carries 7-0. Item E, discussion and possible Item E, discussion and possible action to approve two resolutions authorizing the following: one, resolution authorizing the district budget to exceed revenue limit by two point one million per year for two years for non-recurring purposes; and two, resolution providing for a referendum election on the question of the approval of a resolu- resolution authorizing the school district, district budget to exceed revenue limit by two point one million per year for two years for non-recurring purposes.
May I make a suggestion?
Yes.
I have two resolutions here we need to read. One is very short. If I can read that first, and you decide if you're approving it, and then we'll go from there.
One.
Okay. So this would be the resolution authoring the school district budget to exceed revenue limit by two million, one hundred thousand dollars per year for two years for non-recurring purposes. Be it resolved by the School Board of the Sparta Area School District, Monroe and Jackson Counties, Wisconsin, that the revenues included in the school district budget be authorized to exceed the revenue limit specified in section one twenty-one point nine one, Wisconsin statutes, by two million, one hundred thousand dollars per year, beginning with the twenty twenty-two, twenty twenty-three school year, and ending with the twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-four school year, for non-recurring purposes consisting of funding, staffing, technology, and maintenance of district facilities. Adopted and recorded this twenty-first day of December, twenty twenty-one.
That's the resolution. Are there any questions? If not, I'll take a motion. Go ahead.
Just hit that right, uh, right button. There you go.
All right. Um, I've been on the board for eight years and eight months now. And we come around this time of year, every year, when the DPI report cards come out. And there are similar comments that we need to be doing better. We, we need to find ways to do better to get our score up. And then nothing happens. I mean, we do another strategic plan, another mission and vision statement, we do all these happy meetings where everybody feels good, and I just, somewhere, we're falling behind when I take a look at, before we built Herman, that our enrollment was gonna continue to increase. And in the last two years, we've lost a hundred students. We continue to have an in and out enrollment deficit of about a hundred students. That would equate to about one point eight million dollars, if I'm correctly. We would have, when somebody enrolls out, I believe, we get to keep two, two thousand dollars of that, and the other eight goes to the other school district. We're at the bottom. And when I take a look at, you know, Spartan Way, is that our Spartan Way? Be at the bottom. And when things get tough because our numbers don't add up anymore, we're gonna go to the taxpayers for more money. Three different times I've asked for information on where we stood in the MBC with our overall standing. With no answer. I gotta think we're probably at the bottom there as well. I have a real hard time when there isn't transparency, when we're not made aware of that stuff. We took away public input. We lost a bunch of votes there, even though we're gonna put it back on in January, to me, it's, it was a political move. We need to do something different. We need to have, I am not gonna vote for this, nor will I support a resolution for one, two point one million dollars until we have a solid plan of where we're gonna tell the administration where we wanna be. We want our DPI score at sixty-five next year, sixty-seven the year after that. We need to set goals. And until the board takes action and does that, it's gonna be business as usual. We need change. I don't know what that change is, it's not my job. It's not our job. Our job is to look at the, the end results and find where the needs are and, and take care of it. We put money towards, towards the staffing over the last couple of years, a lot of money. A lot of money went to modern teacher. Wednesdays are now the teacher collaboration day. Where it used to be one, one or two days a month, whatever it was. At some point, we have to, I mean, people, this football stadium is great, okay? But to think that it's gonna bring one student into this district when we've got a report card like this is ludicrous. It isn't gonna happen. People are here for one reason only, and that's to get a good education for their kids. And just throwing more money at it isn't gonna fix it. So my position is, I am not gonna support this, I am not gonna vote in favor of it.
Any other comments or questions from board members?
Well, I will comment. I understand James' position in this. My concern is, will defeating this resolution help matters, or will it make matters worse? And I agree that there's a, a lack of competence among some of the public, and that we need to restore that competence with, with a plan for improvement that is, that they can, people can understand and follow. But defeating this resolution at this time is gonna just comp, I believe will just compound our problems at this point. If, if we want to improve as a district, at the same time that we're cutting, or are forced to cut, two point eight million dollars out of the budget, I, I just, I, I don't, just don't see how that could happen.
Any other comments from board members?
Second.
Go ahead, Mr. Murs, go ahead.
I can share a comment. I think too, to me, this step makes sense to get us going in the direction we're going, right? Build on momentum of Herman, momentum of, you know, the good things that are happening, because there are a lot of them. And, right, like, we are in last place, or close to last place in a lot of the referendums in the area, too. And so to me, this makes sense to help improve those scores, is to give the community a chance to decide if they want to do that or not, right? Like, it's not necessarily us to decide what the community wants in that respect. And so I, I think if it fails in April, it fails in April, and we'll go back to the drawing board, and we have other options that, you know, have been presented that weren't options we wanted to go around right away, right? And to me, that makes sense to allow that to play out in April, to do some of that education between now and then, right? Like, to be able to, you know, have those tough conversations and educate and build that in there. But I, I think to me, that then come, comes back to post-April of adjusting at that point to be able to go, go forward.
Josh.
Go ahead, Ed.
It was mentioned tonight that, you know, start out at two point eight, ended up at two point one. I think there should be some, the explanation that, you know, we're not just going ahead and poking at a number in the sky for what we need to carry on the services that we have. We had our workshop, in our workshop, we talked, talked about the fact that, you know, going for referendum, where can we cut services without damaging the services we offer to the students? That's how we got to the two point one. I, I, I share the same concerns that James has. We talked about the fact of, you know, in a separate workshop about, you know, DPI and our scores, and, you know, what's expected. And that was about, what, four, four months ago, or something like that, that we had, we had had that workshop? The administration knows what we expect as a board, and that's improvements. And I, I hear what John, John was saying, you know, it's sort of like a car, you, you know, when do you give it up and, and buy a new car and not quit nickel and diamond, you know? I don't think it's, it's time to get into that. I mean, I think we need to go for the referendum if the, if the community and the public doesn't support it, we'll find out. And then we go to the next phase of, okay, where do we sharpen a pencil even more? I, 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 I wanna keep our, even though it's at two point one, and, and Leah, correct me if I'm wrong, but you said our levy would, would stay the same? Our mill rate would stay the same, so, um, yeah, we're in a, we're in a tight spot as far as funding the district without cutting services.
Mr. Lyden?
Go ahead.
Uh, yeah, and to add to that, too, because I, I do underst, I accept and agree the concern, but a very important part of this is, every school in our state is dealing with this issue right now. This, it's important for the public to know this isn't irresponsible spending on the district's part. There's been a, a consistent adjustment of a hundred dollars more per year, and the state has capped that for the next two years, is that right? Which is the exact reason we wanna call for a referendum for only two years and not to extend that, is to help maintain, so we don't have to cut positions, we don't have to worry about cutting in other areas. But there is, this is from a state level, this isn't irresponsible spending from a district standpoint. And I think it's very important for the community to be aware of that.
Any other questions? James, your mic is off, by the way. There you go.
And I, I hear you guys. You haven't been on the board that long. It's kicking the can down the road. If this trend continues, in two years, it isn't gonna be two point one million, it's gonna be a lot more than that because our students are leaving. You need to put some teeth into this. And to just, we need to keep things the way they are, well, you know what? Things aren't that great. You can talk about, you can talk that things are going in the right direction, you can say that we got a lot of positive things going on, yeah, we do. So does everybody else. When it comes to this, to the game of who has the scores, that's what, when somebody moves into the area, where do you think they're gonna wanna send their kid? You gonna wanna send a kid to somebody that has an overall really good score? Or are you gonna go with whoever, because you don't care? I think most people care. If we're at the bottom, even if we're close to the bottom, we're not in the game. And things are just gonna get worse. And to think we're gonna fix this and, and sit down and have a meeting and kumbaya and everybody's happy, and we're gonna come up with another strategic plan, and we're gonna make everything better, it ain't gonna happen. It's just gonna be more busy work. I've been there, guys, gals. That's all I got.
Any other comments or questions? If not, I'll take a motion.
May I call a ward? Josh, didn't you say there was two resolutions?
I would prefer if you did them one at a time. Because if this one doesn't pass, there's no point in reading the second one.
What's the difference between the, the first one and the second one?
The first one is to decide to exceed the revenue limit. The second one is to put the item on the ballot.
I'll move resolution one.
I will second.
We have a motion from Mr. Hendricks, a second from Mr. Scholz to approve the first resolution. Roll call.
Yes.
Yes.
No.
Yes.
Yes.
Yes. Motion carries six one. Resolution two.
Resolution providing for a referendum election on the question of the approval of a resolution authorizing the school district budget to exceed revenue limit by two million, one hundred thousand per year for two years for non-recurring purposes. Whereas, the School Board of the Sparta Area School District, Monroe and Jackson County, Wisconsin, the district, has heretofore duly adopted a resolution entitled, "Resolution Authorizing the School District Budget to Exceed Revenue Limit by Two Million, One Hundred Thousand Dollars Per Year for Two Years for Non-Recurring Purposes," the Revenue Limit Resolution. And whereas, the School Board deems it to be desirable and in the best interest of the district to direct the district clerk to submit the Revenue Limit Resolution to the electors for approval or rejection at the regularly scheduled election to be held on April fifth, twenty twenty-two. Now therefore, be it resolved by the School Board of the district as follows. Section one, referendum election date. The district clerk is hereby directed to call a referendum election to be held in the district at the regularly scheduled election to be held on April fifth, twenty twenty-two, for the purpose of submitting to the qualified electors of the district the proposition of whether the revenue limit shall be approved. Section two, notice to electors. The district clerk is directed to give notice by, A, causing notice of election in substantially the form attached heretofore as exhibit A, to be published in the Monroe County Herald in the issue published immediately prior to the fourth Tuesday before the referendum election. And B, causing a notice of referendum, which includes the facsimile of the sample ballot in substantially the form attached heretofore as exhibit B, to be published in the Monroe County Herald in the issue published immediately preceding the referendum election. This notice shall also be posted in each polling place on election day. If any municipalities within the district use an electronic voting system employing a ballot label and a ballot card, the notice of referendum set forth in exhibit B shall also exclude a true, include a true, actual-sized copy of the ballot label and a ballot card in the form in which they will appear on election day. Section three, polling places and hours. The district electors must vote at the referendum election at times and polling places at which they cast their ballots in regularly scheduled elections. Section four, referendum election officials. The election officials appointed in each of the municipalities within the district shall conduct the election. Section five, official referendum ballot form. The ballot to be used at the referendum election shall be prepared in accordance The ballot to be used at the referendum election shall be prepared in accordance with the provision of Sections 5.642 and 7.081A, Wisconsin statutes. The ballot shall be substantially in the form attached heretofore as Exhibit C. The district clerk shall cause to be printed sufficient ballots for use at said referendum election, both as actual ballots in those polling places which do not use voting machines and as absentee ballots where voting machines are used, and as specimen ballots, the latter to be of a different and easily identifiable color from the actual ballot. The form of the ballot shall be filed with the official responsible for providing the ballots for the election, and the district clerk shall file a copy of the ballot with the clerk of each county having territory within the district as soon as possible after the date hereof, but in no event later than 70 days prior to the election as provided in Section 8.3, Section 7, Wisconsin statutes. If the district prepares the ballots, they should be delivered to the municipal clerks running the election at least 25 days prior to the election to allow the municipal clerks to comply with their obligation to provide absentee ballots under Section 7.15, Wisconsin statutes. The municipal clerks of the municipalities within the district shall receive applications for absentee ballots and initial the same when issued to qualified absentee voters. Section 6, canvass, the returns of the referendum election shall be canvassed by the Board of Canvassers of each municipality within the district. Each Board of Canvassers shall certify the returns of the referendum election to the district clerk. The district clerk and two other reputable citizens appointed by the district clerk prior to the date of the referendum election shall act as the district's Board of Canvassers for this referendum election. This Board of Canvassers shall meet an open session no later than 9:00 a.m. on the Tuesday after the election to determine the result of the referendum election. The canvas shall be open to the public, and the district clerk is directed to give due notice of said meeting. Section 7, DPI notice pursuant to the provisions of Section 121.91/3, Wisconsin statutes, the district clerk shall notify the Department of Public Instruction of the date of the referendum election and shall provide the department with the copies of the Revenue Limit Resolution within 10 days after the adoption of the Revenue Limit Resolution and shall further notify the Department of the Results of the Referendum within 10 days following the election using the method prescribed by the department adopted and recorded on the 21st of December 2021.
All right, it's somewhat been discussed already, so if there's no further questions, I'll take a motion on the second resolution. Go ahead, Ed.
No. It is just all of the procedural pieces that need to be read into the record as part of this process.
It's how it's done.
It's the first resolution that you approved. That is the language. That's why I read it verbatim.
Still no further questions, I'll take a motion.
Before we vote on this, I just want to stress that approving this resolution, I understand, simply is approving, putting it on the ballot. People will interpret this possibly as an endorsement of the referendum, but by voting against this, you are taking away their ability to vote on this. And you're saying by, if this isn't approved, you're saying that you can't even have the option of approving this money. So anyone who would like to see the district be able to maintain and not have to cut this $2 million out of the budget won't even have that choice. So I recommend that you vote for this and give people the choice of being able to either support or reject the resolution and not taking that option away from them. I move Resolution 2.
I will second.
We have a motion from Mr. Hendricks and a second from Mr. Scholz to approve the resolution, the second resolution. Roll call.
Yes.
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 Motion carries six, one. Item F, discussion and possible action to approve the grants and donations. There are some for approval.
Yes, there are. We are looking at Monroe County Title, who has donated $3,000 to the Sparta Robotics Team. Kailu Services has donated $3,500 to the High School Robotics Team. Mayo Health System has donated $4,500 to the district for Integrated Mental Health Program. And Mayo Health System has donated another $1,500 to the district for the Integrated Mental Health Program.
I'll take a motion to approve those donations.
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion from Mr. Lucasic, a second from Ms. Presswood to approve the four donations. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. And then I believe there were some more that needed to be read.
Yes. For information only, would like to say thank you to Gunderson Health System, Sparta Clinic, that gave $150 to the robotics team. Matthews Archery has donated $200 to the backpack program. Renee and Hector Gavlin has donated $100 to the weekend backpack program. Schoolstore.com has donated $445 to Cataract for school and student needs. Greg Evans Printing Incorporated has donated $100 to the high school robotics team. Peterman Jewelers has donated $100 to the high school robotics team. And Matthews Archery has donated $125 to the high school robotics team. So thank you for those generous donations.
Yes, thank you to all of our donators.
Josh, a question with the donations. With the football field, is this going to be the same thing with the donations? Or does it go through the club and we don't get a listing of that?
Eventually, we'll, we'll ask the Gridiron Club to let us know who's donated, yes. Because we'll want to acknowledge those donors.
Yeah, that's what I was getting at, yes. Thanks, Josh.
Yep. Item G, meeting schedule and future agenda items.
The January 3 meeting may or may not happen. I'll know more about that in the next couple of days. January 11th, Committee of the Whole, and January 25th, regular board meeting.
All right, item H, announcements and information.
Like to share, can you use the, play that little video? Southside has made a video for you and for the community. If you use the link on the, there you go. That should pop up. Definitely makes a huge difference to have age-appropriate playground equipment out at Southside, so thank you.
I especially like the random kid who's yelling, "You're welcome," as the rest of them are yelling, "Thank you." All right, if there's nothing else, I'll take a motion to adjourn.
No moved.
We have a motion from Mr. Scholz, a second from Mr. Hendricks to adjourn. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, re-adjourned.